Oh, Catherine or Diane?
Hey, good morning Diane, can you hear me?
Uh, good morning Lupe, this is Catherine, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, I'll be raising my hand shortly.
Um, I'm gonna check.
Alrighty, well, good morning, today is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the Board is using a WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting and may be participating via the World Wide Web. If you'd like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format today, please make sure that you are identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances at 9:00 a.m., please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. You will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Members in the audience who have filled out speaker cards will be taken in the order that they're received by the clerk, and online speakers will be taken in the order they appear in the WebEx system program, showing that their hand is up. If you wish to speak today and are having issues with the Raise Your Hand feature in the WebEx, uh, system, physically raise your hand so that we may see you and wait to be recognized. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each Board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboon?
Here.
Craig Peterson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Okay, we have five members present, uh, so at this time, we'll move now to, uh, next item, which is the invocation, and we have Pastor Andrew Cromwell from Quainian Church. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, uh, if you would, just bow your head with me and we'll pray together. Lord, we pause this morning to, uh, to invoke your name and to invite your presence, uh, to be here in this meeting and to oversee all, all the proceedings this morning. We are, uh, Lord acknowledging today our need for you. We declare that we are not God, but you are God, and you have in the palm of your hand all wisdom, all knowledge, all power, all authority. And so we're seeking today that what is done in this meeting would be done with your blessing and with your leadership. That I pray that you would give wisdom to the Board for all the matters that are on the table today, to all of the staff of the county, all the department heads, and all the leaders, all those who serve, uh, this county. Lord, we thank you for their lives, and we're asking, uh, for your guidance in all the matters that they deal with. Lord, we pray for protection for all those that are on the front lines and are, uh, taking calls today for the Sheriff's Department and, and the Fire Department, and all those who are involved when, in healthcare issues and, uh, in public health, and all those, Lord, that are dealing with the, the community, Lord, that there would be protection, there would be guidance, there would be wisdom, uh, and, Lord, most of all, that you would be exalted. We ask for your blessing on this county, we ask for your leadership during this season of great uncertainty, of one thing we are certain, Lord, you are in control, and we're seeking your face. We pray this in your mighty name.
Amen. If you would all, please join me in the flag. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time, uh, brings us to item two, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the Board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction. The Board, two minutes are allowed for each item.
Do you have Jason Gomes, who filled out his speaker card?
Okay.
If you'd come forward, please.
Well, I wasn't expecting to, uh, getting up here this quick. I'm a little new at this, so, um, do I begin any time?
Two minutes.
Okay. My name is Jason Gomes, I've been working for the, um, Road Department since October 1st of 2001. October 1 of, uh, this year would have been 20 years, but I was let go due to a dirty drug test. Um, in the past, ever since the federal government started doing drug tests, and the county has been participating in these, everyone has been given one chance, one dirty test. If you admit you were dirty and were willing to go along with the program, you were, uh, you had the opportunity to stay employed. However, that was not the case, because now there's a different person sitting in the seat. His name is Dominic, and, uh, because of him, I don't have a job. Now, I know I made a mistake, and to atone for that mistake, I took it upon myself to get drug tests, um, I'm sorry, um, drug rehab to get past this. And, um, I did it on my own, and I'm still doing it now, even though I don't have to, because I, I believe I hit rock bottom for making that one mistake after 20 years. In that 20 years, I've had well over a dozen drug tests. It's just one mistake I made. And, um, I take, I, I own it, so just to show how sincere I was when I had my talk with Dominic, I told him that I would be drug tested whenever you wanted, I would take it out of my pocket, not the county's pocket. I told him that, um, I was doing, um, I had a counselor on the side, on my own accord, without being told. I also told him that I would use vacation time, so it wouldn't take anything away from the county. There would be no liability on the county whatsoever. I mean, I don't know what else I can do to show how remorseful I am for the mistake I made. In the past, there has been numerous, um, individuals who have been caught for dirty tests. One in particular example was, um, a gentleman who had five dirty tests within about a 14-year, don't quote me, but a 14-year career here at the county.
Mr. Gomes, I just give you a reminder, you're at three minutes now, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, it, it's hard to, okay, so, thanks for the reminder. So, in, in the, how it's always been is you, you get, you get a chance, so someone who has had a dirty test five times in a career, um, I've, I've been one time in 20 years made a mistake. I believe that, uh, there's nothing else I can do to give anymore back. We've got a foreman who has embezzled, um.
Mr. Gomes.
Material.
Now, you're at four minutes, and I've doubled the amount of public comment time, so if you could, you know, finish your remarks, thank you.
Okay. The way, the way this whole thing has gone from start to finish, to me, has not been ran right. I've lost, um, over 100 hours of vacation. Instead of being put on administrative sick leave, they took my vacation from me, and I can go on and on, but it, it would take about 20 minutes to sum it up. But I'd love to bend one of your ears later on, if you don't mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for comments. Let's have Lupe, thank you. Okay, is somebody else up there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the, members of the Board, Supervisor Valley, good to see you here, um, as well as there are other Board members too, but.
You've been here the whole time.
Yeah, but nevertheless, uh, I wanted to remind the Board of 1,400 hearings this week that our staff is handling in court. We confirmed four jury trials last week, two of which selected juries yesterday and are moving forward. The other two were continued or delayed due to some COVID concerns with some of the participants. But the most important thing I wanted to inform your Board of today is that with the help of Admin and Human Resources, we were able to move quickly, and I am beyond, beyond excited about announcing, uh, our Assistant Chief Charlie Flores' promotion to Chief of Investigations. Most people don't know that we have a full-fledged police department within our department, and we have 16 foreign peace officer positions, and Charlie has been with our department and as Assistant Chief for the last six years. Before that, he was Senior for several years, and before that, he was a, a Level 2 Investigator. Before that, he was with our Sheriff's Office, and before that, he was with some agencies in Tulare County, where I also worked with him. So, I just wanted to let the Board know and see the man who's taking over our police department within the DA's office and the other branch of first responders that you have at your disposal. Charlie's been instrumental in our witness protection program, as well as our dignitary protection program, as well as expanding our canine program into therapy dogs, and he has written those grants, he's been in charge of that and on charge of operations. He has been at our leadership table for the last six years, and I cannot thank him enough, and I am proud, and I, again, out, a loss for words with the excitement I have with him taking over that role. And with that, this is Chief Charlie Flores.
Okay, uh, this time we'll move to, uh, yeah.
Lupe, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can hear you guys.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you Catherine. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, uh, Lupe here with the Elections Department. I would like to provide your Board and the members of the public an update on the upcoming September 14th, 2021 California Governatorial Recall Election. In preparation for this election, we will start poll worker training for 52 poll workers effective September 1st through September 3rd. It'll be five sessions that are going to be offered, uh, three of those sessions, or two of those sessions will be in the evening hours to accommodate those folks that are working, and who'll volunteer to assist us with the deployment of this election. We face unexpected delays in recruiting staff from the county, however, we're able to secure 16 county employees that will be assisting us with poll worker involvement functions. Each voting location, which six, will have an average of eight poll workers throughout the early voting and on Election Day, September 14th. Thanks to the Roads Department, we'll be starting deployment of equipment and materials on September 8th through the 10th, and we'll be sending off ballot marking devices, voting booths, ballot on demand printers, electronic poll books, and the necessary PPE for each of those six voting locations. In regards to ballots, on August 14th, we sent out over 60,000 ballots to our registered voters in Kings County. We'll be conducting a second pool or supplemental pool of those ballots on Monday, August 23rd. The ballot preparation process started on August 23rd, uh, for the 61,769 registered voters that we have. So far, we've received 4,123 ballots that have been returned to our office, 2,603 ballots that came via means of the US Postal Service, 1,408 ballots were dropped off in our ballot drop boxes, and 112 people have walked into our office to drop off their ballot. To put it in perspective, in the 2020 general election, we had 60,173 registered voters at the time the statement of vote was submitted in December of 2020. Compared to our registered voters of today, of 61,769, that's a difference of 1,596 registered voters. So far, we collected 1,000 native ballots collectively throughout the drop boxes and in the office. 328 of those ballots came from the eight drop boxes that we deployed throughout Kings County, and the following is the count of each one of those boxes. The Armona Senior Center, we collected seven ballots, we collected two ballots in Home Gardens, 130 ballots from Hamper High off of Grange Field, 10 ballots from the Ammonia Library, 46 from the Corcoran Antrac Station, 77 from the Lee Moore Park and Recreation on Cinnamon Drive, and 12 ballots from the Central Union on 18th Avenue, for a total of 328. A reminder for the voters is that the registration for this election ends on August 30th. Does not mean that you cannot register to vote on Election Day up to leading Election Day, which means that any person that registers after August 30th, which is next Monday, will fall in what we call a conditional process. That process is a process that we take at the polling place or in our office. Voters that re-registered during this time period may be issued two ballots due to the reported change. This may be caused because of the re-registration. So prior to sending a second ballot, we always cancel out the first ballot, and as always, only the first ballot accepted will be counted. Voters that need additional information and that would like to verify their status may visit www.bordersstatus.sos.ca.gov. That is bordersstatus.sos.ca.gov. Voters that would like to update their residential or mailing address may visit www-registertovote.ca.gov. That is registertovote.ca.gov. Voters that would like to track their ballot may visit wheremyballot.sos.ca.gov. That's a ballot tracking service that is free of charge to every registered voter in the state of California. I ask that you please vote early, vote by mail, drop off your ballot boxes, your ballots in our boxes, we collect those, uh, per election code of every, every 48 hours, and if any voter or members of the public that are listening needs further information, they may call our office at 559-852-4401, or visit www.votekingscounty.com. Additionally, I want to let the Board know that my office will be taking place in the, what is called Ballot Bowl, is Secretary of State event that's going to be happening at Whittus College, and that's, that event will be for tomorrow, Wednesday evening, from 5 to 7, and on Thursday from 11 to 1:00 p.m. Myself and a staff member will be there to assist students and faculty at Whittus College or any member of the public that would like to come by and get election information or voter information. And lastly, I would like to thank my staff, Victor, Manuel, Sonia, and Paula for their hard work and dedication in ensuring that we deploy legal and transparent election. I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks so much, you guys have a good day.
You too as well. Right, I don't see any further hands raised, so at this time then we'll move to item three, which is approval of the minutes, and, uh, under 3A, report out on, uh, closed session from the August 17th, 2021. Your Board took no reportable action. Thank you. Uh, item B, approval of the minutes from the August 17th, 2021 regular meeting.
Lupe.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries. We'll now move to item 3C, which is approval of the minutes of the August 17th, 2021 special meeting.
Lupe will. Nev seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries. All right, so now we'll move to, uh, my, uh, sorry, my agenda is mixed up here.
Consent calendar.
Consent, yep. Got it? No? Good.
Chair, if, uh, there are no questions or comments regarding the consent calendar, Nev moves to adopt.
Good. Yeah, we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries. Now move to item five, which is regular agenda items, and we start today with item 5A from the Finance Department.
Good morning, General Director of Finance. Okay, this is, uh, I have three items today. The first one's on drive period funding, this, uh, item that I brought last year. I almost didn't bring it this year, and you'll see when we get to the general fund, but I think it's a good thing to have in place and just have it set up, and we don't know what's going to happen during the year, and if, um, if we have to loan an agency money or borrow money ourselves, then we've got this program in place. So, drive period funding is authorized by the California Constitution and the California Education Code. I've seen it used more with schools than with other taxing jurisdictions, but it can be used with them. It's a short-term loan, has to be paid back by June 30th. They can, we can lend, um, up to 85% of their total secured property tax revenue, and the last day that we would loan money would be April 4th of the current fiscal year. Okay, next slide, Rob. Rob's at his desk doing these slides for me. I know, that's really neat. Let's see. So, as I said, it's, um, lending to local agencies that have a tax, uh, secured property tax allocation, and they have to have their money in the county treasury pool. I recommend we loan no more than 70% of their property tax allocation, that way we'll be available to help more agencies if we have to. Loans would be approved on a first-come, first-served basis. We wouldn't loan more than 15% of the treasury pool to, um, to this item, and that, uh, that comes out to about $69 million this year. Our pool's really grown, we're up to, um, about a half billion dollars now. And report annually on the success of the program. Last year was a great program, nobody borrowed money, so the program worked just fine. And, and if, if approving this resolution today puts this program in place for the next year, and we'll bring it, we'll bring it to your Board again a year from now. Okay, and Rob, the next slide is if you have any questions about this program?
Questions from the Board?
Not with approval, that's presented.
Yep, I do have one question, um, with respect to, um, insurance. Are we, we just self-insure this, and, and there's no outside insurance to cover any possible loss or lack of?
No, no, and that's why we, we base it on secured property taxes. I mean, we're pretty much guaranteed to get that, and if we make it 70%, delinquencies are, you know, in the 1% to 2% range right now, so if we're loaning 70%, then we've got 30% flexibility there. So, it's a pretty safe, uh, loan, and it's short-term, and it has to be paid back within the current year. And basically, we get the property tax money, so it's not like we're waiting for a loan payment, we just wouldn't distribute that amount.
Comment, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Now, I appreciate you bringing back and formalizing it way back in the day when Larry was here. Remember Larry, we, we did this for the Corcoran Hospital, trying to help them with their cash inflow, and, um, I think even, uh, the highest amount was upwards of 500,000, maybe even a million, but, um, you're right, that's, that's what Larry said, there's no risk because we send them their slice of the pie, and, and it worked well. I think we did it three times in a year and a half. It's a good program. Yep, good.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries, and now move to the next item.
Okay, the next item is, um, allowing the general fund to participate in the program. And as you know, we were going negative cash, um, fairly significantly in the past, and this first slide here shows, this is the slide I brought you last year. All those red items are at the end of the month when cash was negative in general fund, and one item is just, the left side is just general fund only, and the right side is other items that, uh, belong to the general fund, and we just haven't earned the revenue yet, like, um, uh, realignment money, and, uh, are we, are we going to earn it? Probably so. So, we, I, we could count that as general fund cash, but we're still going negative, and I just felt that we should not be going negative without Board's approval on this. Now, the next slide, what I did is I took 12 months off that slide and added 13 months on the next slide, and if you take a look, we were in the black at the end of each month for the whole last 13 months. That's, and I'd like to say I did it, but, uh, it really was a function of getting some higher sales tax, some, some one-time money, CARES funding, and it really put us into a much better cash position than we've been in, in a long time. So, with the, the money that we have now and the ARPA money coming in that will come into general fund, I doubt that we'll be borrowing from this program this year, but just in case we have to, um, and your approval of the resolution will allow that. And this is the graph I showed you last year. Last year, they were all down, and you can see the upward climb that we've had with our cash balances. Okay, any, any questions?
Questions from the Board. Good, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's real good. That was one of the reasons why, even though I thought we might not need this program, I, I wanted to show you that, the cash balances for the last 13 months. Okay, the next, last item I have is the.
Hold on.
Oh, yeah, I'm voted on the resolution.
Approve that, and, uh.
Yeah, if there are no questions or comments, move is presented.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor, motion carries.
Okay, now I'm back. I don't have a presentation for this one, but this is something I promised the department heads I would do, um, is take a look at our travel policy. I noticed that when I started here, there was a lot of back and forth with, um, disputes over small amounts, over paperwork that hadn't been turned in, claims being held, and the staff was spending a lot of time on it, and county staff in the departments. staff was spending a lot of time on it, and county staff in the departments, they were spending a lot of time on getting travel policies right, really over very small amounts of money. It's, it's not something unique here. I've seen it in other counties. For some reason, auto controllers feel like they have to be the policeman on travel policy, but honestly, travel is, is a small part of our budget. The discrepancies are even smaller, and it's not the luxury that people seem to think it is. It's, uh, travel can get old after a while. Often you have to arrange for childcare and animal care and house care, and it, it can be a real inconvenience to travel, uh, county business. But I think travel should, nobody should be enriched by travel, but nobody should be out of pocket either. And, and so what I've done to this policy is just try to soften it, to make it simpler, to eliminate some processes that I felt weren't adding any value, and, and I think it will be a much better policy moving into the future. So a few other things that I'm changing. One is, uh, there was a hundred and twenty days to submit, uh, travel claim. Um, that's just too long. People lose receipts. It crosses fiscal years, and so I've shortened that to forty-five days. Should be plenty of time, and we really encourage people to get it in, in the same fiscal year that they incurred the travel in. That way we have the expense, um, matching. I've removed the, we had an option of actual cost or per diem, but the actual cost could not exceed per diem. So why have actual costs? There was really no reason for it. The federal government says per diem is what we think is a fair reimbursement, and, um, so why, so I say let's just use per diem. The only time we would not use per diem is if you use a Cal card, county credit card, and those we pay the actual amount. So if you use a county card, you're just going to get reimbursed for actual, but you still can't exceed per diem. I really try to encourage people to use their own credit cards for travel. We'll reimburse them quickly, and, and that way it, it makes the, um, it makes it so much smoother that we're just going to reimburse you for the per diem amount, very little calculation, and it just goes easier for everybody. Okay, we had a thing in there that said, um, you had to have the travel approved in your annual budget. So theoretically, if you didn't have that travel at the beginning of the year, I should be denying you going on that trip. Well, yeah, things change during the year. You hire new employees, they have to go to training, new conferences, new opportunities come up, and I believe that department heads should have the flexibility to, uh, to make changes during the year to their budget. Budget's just an estimate, and this just set the, uh, set the travel in stone. So I've eliminated that. Now, and there's another budget item that I'll be talking about. None of this adds more appropriations or more spending, and I think we still have controls over travel that we need to make sure that it is for county business and, and people are following the rates. We had a chart in there showing what you needed, uh, to do for different types of travel, and there was, um, if it was out-of-state travel, it had to come to the board supervisors. I took that out. I've never seen that before. Uh, and out-of-state travel is happening more and more often now, and the only difference with out-of-state travel is getting there and back. The cost is usually a little higher for that, but often the conference hotels are cheaper. Um, and you, and there's other things that are cheaper than traveling to, say, places in California like Monterey or some of the, uh, places where Tahoe, where people like to have conferences. So if they're taking three or more people out of state, uh, I left in there that they need the administrative approval, administration's approval for that. But part of what I took out here that I think is going to be a big help is the travel request form that is brought to our office, and, uh, we're not approving that. The department should approve that. So I took out the need for the travel request form unless you're, um, asking for a cash advance. And then if you're asking for a cash advance, we want to see where you're going and how long and that your department's approved it, because we're giving somebody cash before they go. If you're not asking for a cash advance, you don't need to bring a travel request to our office. Budget limitation, we also had another one where, uh, we have a line item, and it says travel a thousand dollars. And it says in there that you can't exceed that thousand dollars. Well, legally, a department head can spend whatever they, however they decide they need to spend it in what we call object levels, and services and supplies is an object level. And in there we have travel, we have, um, office supplies, we have professional services, utilities, car rental, a whole bunch of things. And I think that, uh, and they, they can move around in that budget. Legally, they, they can spend it all on one line item if they want, um, but I think that department heads have, need some flexibility, and they may decide, you know what, I'm only going to spend, um, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars on office supplies this year, and I'm going to send Sam to this travel because he's new and he needs training. And so this gives them that flexibility. Otherwise, we would have to say, nope, sorry, you're at your limit there, and that's, um, that's just not right. Another area that, um, I put in here this is refunds to the county. So we often get, um, travel where somebody owes us some money back. Let's say they use the Cal card and they bought a beer with dinner. Um, they owe back three dollars. Or they went, uh, they got a cash advance for a five-day trip, and it turned out it was canceled after three days, and they'll owe us some, some money back on the per diem. We have a hard time collecting that, and we'll ask employees to come in, not everybody, but on some, and we'll ask employees to come in, and they say they will, and they don't show up, and, and it's over small amounts, and we go back and forth and spend a lot of money or time on it. And so my thought is after contacting them a few times, giving a period of time for it to go by, if they haven't paid this, then we have the ability to just deduct it from a paycheck and be done with it. The other, the last thing that I added that I think is going to be a big change, and I've seen this in most policies, giving the Director of Finance some discretion on, um, on going outside the policy. And travel is not black and white. Things come up. We, we recently had an employee go to travel in San Luis Obispo, um, had to pay two nights at the hotel, and the instructor didn't show up for the training, and they had to, to come back. We had, um, two people go into Monterey next month, and they couldn't get, um, they couldn't get a hotel within the rates, within the parameters of the rates that we have, which is really generous. We are, we're at two-hundred percent, the GSA rate. Every once in a while, it will go over that, and I think what happened there is COVID released, and hotels are expensive now, and travel is booking up, and the GSA hasn't updated their rates. And so theoretically, I could not approve them going, and I think they need to stay at the conference hotel. I think that's the safest place to stay. They have networking there, and they, they get a lot more out of the, uh, conference if they stay with their colleagues. And so I put it here that I can add another fifty percent if needed, or other things that may come up. If they were legitimate to the travel, if they were for county business, then the Director of Finance has the ability to approve it. So I also made some changes to the trip policy. Most of them are what I just went over, except for one where we have HSA. They end up, um, spending a lot of time transporting children to family visits, and sometimes they'll be driving outside the county. Kids get hungry, and so I, I put in here that, uh, they can, uh, they can stop and get lunch with these kids if that's, um, what they need to do, if that's the right, if, if, uh, it's approved by the department head. And, and it's redeemable through their grants. So, okay? And that's it. Those are the major changes that I added to the travel policy. I think it will be a softer policy going forward, um, and I know the department heads supported me on these changes. Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
See?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't mind the, um, on the employee side, it being a little bit softer, as you put it, or more liberal, but I know over the years for us, the elected officials, we've always been more conservative, um, in the, in the rules to our travel. So I do see, I think it's, uh, paragraph six that applies to us, but for the public, could you talk about it?
Right.
The difference for the elected officials? We are more detailed in how we report receipt by receipt, correct, sir? That doesn't change?
That doesn't change. So, and, and that's government code. That sets up the travel for board members and the reporting, it's, it's, you'll still follow the same travel policy, but it's mostly to the reporting requirements. You're supposed to report back to the board on travel that, um, that you've done. It, it goes reported in a public session where, uh, where it doesn't with, uh, with the employees. And, uh, that, that's a really good point, because people ask for travel claims. They will, um, want to look and see especially elected officials where they've traveled. And so it's, uh, that, that's why these policies are so good to have in place and to adhere to them, and then everybody's following the same guidelines. Every once in a while, we'll get an outside agency that we keep their books for, and they'll say we want to do something different with our travel or, or their accounts payable, and I'll tell them, go get your own accounting system and do it yourself then, because we're not tracking different methods for different people, and if you follow our policy, chances are you will never get in, into a bind with it. So, but yes, you do have stricter requirements.
Right. Any other questions?
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate that. I know the biggest complaint I've had from employees is the, the fight they have over a bag of peanuts.
Yeah. Right.
I appreciate you doing this, so I don't make a motion.
I'll second that, wanting to know where you find that three-dollar beer.
Yeah.
I, I haven't seen a three-dollar beer.
Okay. I haven't bought one in a while, so.
Sacramento.
Root beer.
Yeah, maybe root beer, maybe.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
We're good. We have five in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Good job.
Right. Move to item five B, which is, uh, from the Public Works Department, and Dominic.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Dominic Tiversky, Public Works Department. I am before your board this morning to request award of the Professional Services Agreement to Bedrock Engineering for the SB one-funded roadway improvement project, authorizing the chairman to sign said agreement and authorizing the Public Works Director to approve change orders up to ten percent of the original contract amount. In June of this year, your board awarded the construction contract for this project to Papich Construction Company Incorporated to improve just under fifteen-point-five miles of Kings County roadways. Professional surveying services are required for construction staking and the resetting of survey monuments, which will be displaced during construction. Bedrock Engineering was selected as the top-ranked firm through the Request for Proposal process based on their project understanding and previous successfully completed projects within the county. The survey contract is in the amount of seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-five dollars, which will be paid, uh, utilizing SB one funding, and if approved by your board today, a construction kickoff meeting will be held later this week, with construction anticipated to begin, uh, within the next two weeks, and that construction will take approximately two months to complete. So at this point, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the board?
No questions. Chair, move for adoption as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Right. We'll now move to item, uh, five C, which is from the Public Health Department.
Hello.
Heather?
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Heather Silva with Public Health. Um, I would like to start my report, as Ed always does, by reminding everyone of the simple steps we can all take to protect ourselves from communicable diseases as, such as COVID-19. Frequently wash your hands twenty, for twenty seconds or more. Do not touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay hydrated with water. A hydrated cell is a healthy cell. Stay home if you are sick. Wear a face mask to continue to protect those unvaccinated around you, and get vaccinated yourself. Also, as a reminder, our daily numbers are available on our website. We continue to watch hospital data closely. Regionally, hospital admissions in med surg, general admission, and ICU are continuing to increase, including here in our local hospital. As of August twenty-third, the local hospital had sixty-three patients in med surg and nine patients in the ICU, and of those admitted, forty-two are Kings County residents. As you know, the hospitals work on a regional basis, meaning they admit patients from other counties, not just Kings County residents. Since July first, the unvaccinated COVID patients have accounted for eighty-four percent of the hospital admissions, and sixteen percent of those have been vaccinated. Aventus Health initially submitted a request for staffing through mutual aid and has since canceled this request. We are monitoring this daily and will, and will assist when necessary. The Emergency Medical Services Agency is still maintaining their assess and refer policy in response to the increasing volume of pre-hospital calls and overcapacity of the local emergency departments. Our PPE status has not changed, and we are still maintaining a sixty-day supply of PPE for all of our local healthcare facilities. The mobile testing site schedule for this week is on our website, and the availability of testing continues to increase. We are also seeing an increase in testing demand, um, which subsequently results, the result turn-on time has slightly increased, which means we're, we're receiving results anywhere between forty-eight to seventy-two hours, depending on the testing volume. We had five-hundred-and-seventy-three new cases last week, bringing our new case count since the new surge started to two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seven new cases. During the first several weeks of this new surge, we were seeing a doubling of cases, um, and at this time, we are no longer seeing that, so, um, we hope that is a good sign. Last week, we saw the most significant rise in cases among the zero-to-eleven age group and a slight increase in the twelve-to-fifteen and sixteen-to-nineteen age groups, um, while the other age groups have appeared to kind of level off. This was expected as schools opened, which will affect those populations, and with the zero-to-eleven age group not yet being eligible for vaccination. Our Delta variant case count has also increased to a hundred-and-five cases, um, which is a, wait, let me, sorry. As a reminder, we have reported that we are anticipating this as the state lab is running behind, and we anticipate this number to increase. The variant continues to spread, and there are currently twenty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-seven reported cases of the Delta variant in California, which is more than a hundred percent increase from last week's report. This was also expected to increase because the state is catching up on, on a lot of their backlog cases, um, and this number, we believe, is still being under-reported. Last week, Public Health administered three-hundred-and-thirty-seven vaccines, which is a small decrease from the previous week, but still a significant improvement over the weeks prior. The increase in demand for vaccination is, of course, encouraging, as it is one of our main tools for limiting the number of severe COVID cases and hospitalizations. On Monday, August twenty-third, the Health Department began administering the booster vaccine for all immunocompromised individuals. The approval for vaccines, vaccine boosters for the sixty-five and older and all other populations is expected to be received soon as well. Boosters are only available for those who received the mRNA vaccine, Pfizer and Moderna, Boosters are only available for those who received the mRNA vaccine, Pfizer and Moderna, and it has to be at least one month since your second dose for, for each series, for either series. With the booster now being available, our staff has been preparing for the increase of demand for vaccine appointments, but we will struggle to keep up as there is currently a shortage of licensed healthcare resources available. Although we do anticipate the volume of vaccine appointments to increase significantly, we continue, we currently continue to have plenty of available appointments within all of our clinics. We have also seen the demand continue for pop-up in mobile clinics. We do increase, we do request at least one week notice for these events as the schedule is filling up quickly. Pop-up sites for this month include both West Hills College and the College of the Sequoias, churches, food distribution events, farmers markets, and other community events. So far, Kings County providers have administered 99,063 vaccines to county residents. The total number of partially vaccinated Kings County residents is 9,759. The total number of fully vaccinated Kings County residents is 45,843. Yesterday, August 23rd, the FDA fully approved the Pfizer vaccine for everybody 16 and older. And we are, we will still continue vaccinating the 12 to 15 population under the Emergency Youth Authorization. And so far, Kings County providers have administered 4,408 vaccines to this age group. Our current breakthrough rate is 0.6% of our vaccinated population, which is a slight increase from last week, but it's still very low, which is indicating the vaccine is working. The takeaway from this report is that we are hoping to continue to see our cases begin to level off. But please keep in mind that returning to a time where there are frequent changes within the COVID pandemic, we can expect these changes to continue throughout this surge. A layered approach to mitigation measures continues to be critical and includes vaccination, masking, testing, hand hygiene, and isolating when you're sick. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Heather. Questions from the board? Seeing that? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Right. We'll now move to item 6, which is a study session with the Agricultural Department. And Mr. Jimmy Hook, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jimmy Hook, Act Commissioner, Sealer, Kings County. Shawna's passing out the crop report for this year. So I'm happy to be here to present it to you guys. So I'd like to start out by saying that, you know, 2020, to say the least, was a little bit of a trying year. It's probably an understatement to say that. Because we all know agriculture is resilient industry and does not stop. I'd like to thank all of our producers, their employees, and our department staff for keeping on doing what they do. The gross value that we had this year for agricultural crops and products was slightly down. It was a total of $2 billion, 179,476,000. It was about a 0.4% decrease, or just $8 million less than 2019. The top 10 commodities, number one was milk at $700,421,000. Pistachios, number two, at $214,447,000. Cotton, number three, at $195,388. Cattle and calves, $162,755,000. Almonds was a little under $150 million. Processing tomatoes, just under $130 million. Sideage corn, just under 70 million. Poultry, just under $60 million. Walnuts, just over $50 million. And alfalfa hay, just, just over $40 million. So some of the categories we saw increases were livestock and poultry products. That was mostly due to an increase in milk yields and pricing. And then fruit and nut crops due to an increase in bearing acreage. Some decreases that we're seeing were in field crops, and it was mostly due to a lower cotton price and acreage. And then overall, we saw a little bit of drop due to reduction of planted acreage across the board. That was kind of probably where our reductions came. I'd like to thank all of our producers. Without their cooperation, this report wouldn't be possible. You know, they, they give us the information. We're, we're always thankful for that. I'd like to thank Shawna and Steve, you know, their continued hard work. And I see they put in this report is, is unparalleled, helped us get, you know, one of the first to market. They always do a great job, do, do a lot of, lot of hard work on this report. And, you know, this information will be developed, available on our webpage. We also have some copies available in the back. Got one back to 1941 on the webpage, so if you guys ever get bored, go on there. And it's, it's a couple of sheets when it started, and it's kind of developed to what it is now. And we can always print out some if you guys have any that, anyone needs one, come over to the office and print one out for them. So any questions or comments? Some available?
Questions or comments? Thank you, as always. Just hope that things remain stable through these challenging times with the water supplies.
Hopefully see an increase next year instead of a decrease, so. We're still up over, I think, you know, over the last couple of years, we're still up from where we were in Tina, if I remember correctly, so. Still doing okay, but hopefully it doesn't go the other way. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move to item 7, which is Board Member Announcements and Reports. And Supervisor Nevs?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of a short week. Attended the brown bag on federal impacts in Kings County. Clayton Smith, Representative for Congressman Valadeo did a great job outlining some of the services and outreach that they do. The Kings Partnership Meeting focused on communication and identity and took another one of those tests that I hate taking, but I took it anyway. Figured out that I was, yeah. Probably not what I thought I was, so we'll work on that. On Friday, we kicked off the 32nd season of Lemoore High School football. Walked on the field in 1998 on the chain gang and have continued to be a part of that, part of that program. And granddaughter received the American Farmer Degree in the FFA organization. Less than 1% of the members nationwide get that, are able to achieve that American Farmer Degree. And she also started her senior year at Chico State, so. She has a lot of things to look forward to in the next couple of months, and, and hopefully her senior year will go, go good at Chico, so. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Again, Supervisor Fugundis?
One meeting this week, to see how, very short. And I guess everybody's doing a good job. But, short.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Verboen?
Had an emergency board meeting last Friday with San Joaquin, San Joaquin Valley JPA, which is Amtrak Board. Apparently we don't have any insurance, so we had to, they raised our rates. Out of eight companies that we applied for a bid for our insurance, only one replied. Everybody else didn't want to do it. So it went from $500,000, $800,000 here to ensure Amtrak, so. Kind of disheartening that everybody's taking, getting their hands in your pockets and taking all your money, so. And it all comes in the same pot, which is the taxpayers, they supplement all the money for Amtrak. And then I had an interview with CNN on Saturday, talked about the drought. Showed them some dead trees and showed them the dry river in the South Fork of Kings. And there was no water here since 2012, only for a couple of days in 2017, which was kind of a freak deal, so. Hopefully they get the word out that we need to have more storage and more flows regularly. Thank you.
Supervisor Ralph?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note, again, for the record, it is my first meeting back physically since September of last year. And prior to that, going back to March, when we had the first shutdown, I did about four meetings physically as well. But during that time, just for the record, I, I did continue to work. I attended every board meeting virtually, didn't miss a meeting. I worked proactively, especially with Mr. Ed Hill. Set up vaccine events, I mean, testing events in my district. And, and also worked and volunteered at drive-through vaccination clinics when the vaccine arrived in Kings County. So on top of that, did my best to maintain a social media presence, keep people informed. And I, I believe they appreciated that. That being said, you know, it is still hard to come back and see the numbers, as was reported on our COVID earlier. But over 18,000 cases of COVID in Kings County, to which Latinos still represent 58.7% of all those COVID infections in the county of Kings. So there's still a lot more work to do. I hope that, I know that we're all tired of talking about COVID, but I believe it's still our job to work with County Health Department to keep that, to keep that presence and to keep that, that message. And, and I, and I, it's my hope that we step that up. And, and I believe that message is, again, go get vaccinated. It's hard to see people still dying right now from COVID when all they had to do was go get that vaccine. And those deaths seem to be harder right now. And I think we still all know people who are going through some of that. So thanks for the Health Department for all the work they did over that time. And I know we still got a long ways to go, and I'm here to help. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'll just close by, we did have the San Joaquin Fire and Air Pollution Control District's monthly meeting on Thursday last week. Probably the largest issue that we did was approve and accept the funding for the alternatives to burning in the San Joaquin Valley. Through the legislature, we received $178 million to offset burning over the next four years and move to a, you know, no-burning scenario for things other than those issues that are approved by our farm, our, what's your title?
Act Commissioner.
Act Commissioner. You know, for noxious weeds and other things of that nature. They do hold that right to use that in, in there. But $178 million and, and really the biggest void that I think the industry is concerned about is, is the ability of having adequate grinders once we start moving towards that direction. So a lot of emphasis on funding and getting the, the grinding capabilities increased in the, in the area. One of the other challenges from those that would like to buy grinders is that, like every other industry, there's a challenge with respect to being able to access new equipment. And the, some of the producers of that equipment have agreed to kind of slot in some increases in production to allow for that, that to occur. And then also some increases with respect to smaller farms, increasing the funding for those that would be probably more challenged to be able to fund that type of transition, so.
Can you burn at night?
I don't know. Did you get caught?
Not yet.
All right. With that, we'll move to Board Member Correspondence and Events.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, this is Larry Spikes, County Interim County Administrative Officer. Under Board Correspondence, I just want to bring to your attention a letter that county staff participated in with Tulare Lake Basin Water Storage District and Empire Westside Irrigation District, all state water project contractors, including the county, of course. And so this is a letter that was sent off to Gavin Newsom dated August 17th, 2021, indicating the, the current situation, the dire situation we're in with respect to water because of the drought conditions that we've been facing. And the fact that we're only getting 5%. Costs are going up associated with, with the state water project system, in which case we're spending like $3,000 an acre foot. I say we, the irrigation districts and others that are doing that, are going to be stuck with that bill in spite of the fact they're only getting 5% of their allocation. And I wanted to bring to your attention, we did highlight the fact that Kettelman City, if things continue to go the way they are without additional allocation, they will be out of water, out of potable water by, in December of this year. So this is part and parcel to our efforts to try to make sure that we can get that. Because as you know, they went off of wells and on to the state water project, 900 acre feet allocated, which typically could be plenty, but with a 5% allocation, especially if this happens again next year, it's really going to be a dire, well, it already is a dire situation. So I wanted to bring to your attention that we're working on that because that is, you know, that's probably the single biggest need that we have right now is to get more water under the county, so.
Excuse me. Hey, Larry, before you go on, are you sure it's about, it's going to be about the, the lack of the actual water? Because when they reached out to me about a week and a half ago, it was more about the, the increase in price and them wanting to come back and ask for extra money on top of the scheduled money that the county sends out every year?
It's both. It's both. Because state water project contractors have to pay fixed costs, no matter how much, even if they get zero water. Whereas the Central Valley Project contracts, federal, you only pay if you get water. And so Avonale, for instance, is not in the same situation as Kettelman. Well, with Kettelman, of course, that's a situation where that water is moved over from Tulare Lake, and all part and parcel to us working together with them as state water project contractors. So it's both.
And that was still 900 acre feet allocated, right? What projected needs for?
But they're only getting 5%. So it's a bad situation that we're going to get into if we don't get some additional allocation. We're trying to get at least 300 additional feet, acre feet allocated for Kettelman City as part of the whole discussion to at least get them through. But if it's going to be the same thing next year, it's going to be, continue to be bad.
Now, Steve Peterson and I, we traveled to Sacramento years ago, I think. I can't remember if it was for Avonale or for Kettelman, but we had to go to the Bureau of Reclamation, right?
Yep.
And go ask, so.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of in general, not just those areas, but the, the allocation in general and how they appropriate that. But, you know, I think this year is, the real challenge is that, you know, I mean, you just heard the curtailments of the Colorado River. And, and so it just shrinks the pool. And, you know, this system is built on trades and, you know, horse trading for, for water and paper trades. And, and the availability of water is just not there. And so the, the challenge is, you know, trying to find actual water, I think, this year. And it's going to be a continued problem for that.
So that's all I have under Correspondence as far as upcoming events. Kings County Sheriff's Posse Crab Feed, September 11th at Burris Park. Gates open at 6:00. Tickets are $150. All you can eat crab and tri-tip. Links for Life Pink Passion Picnic at Hanford Civic Auditorium, October 20th, 2021, at 10:30. Upcoming agenda items, all of these items are scheduled for next week. From Administration, the adopted budget resolution, public hearing on redistricting. Behavioral Health will have agreement with Casa Pacifica Centers for Specialty Mental Health Services. Behavioral Health also have Suicide Prevention Awareness Month Declaration. Then County Council, public hearing, Appeal of Conditional Use Permit 2002 by Southern Realty Company. Real Estate Fraud Trust Fund issue, we brought by the District Attorney. Finance, we have a couple of items, agreement with InfoSend to, to print and email property tax bills. Allocation of contingencies to assigned fund balance. I think we mentioned that too during budget hearings last week. Health has, of course, the COVID-19 update. They have an advanced step higher and a request to add and delete positions. They also have appointments through the Kings County Ambulance Committee. Human Resources has an agreement with NeoGov for the talent management suite. Public Works has transfer of vehicles, human services vans to county departments, and also sheriff's operations building site improvements. And that's what I have on the upcoming agenda items.
Question, CEO, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Spikes, do you anticipate the public hearing for, on the redistricting to include the updated census numbers?
I believe so. I have not discussed that with anybody, but since they're out, I've got to believe that would include that.
Okay, thank you.
I sure hope so. Put it that way. That would be helpful to have actual numbers.
Yeah. All right. Well, thanks for that. And so with this time remaining on the agenda, we have closed session items, numerous closed session items. The first is significant exposure to litigation, one case, Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The second, personnel matter, Government Code Section 54957. Public employee appointment, County Council. The third is personnel matter, Government Code Section 9454957. Public employee appointment, Director of Public Health. And then finally, conference with labor negotiator and meeting with numerous county associations. So General COCEA, Supervisors COCEA, Blue Collar SEIU, Probation Officers Association Management, Firefighters Association, Detention Deputies Association, Prosecutors Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, and Unrepresented Management. And then following our, our meeting, we do have at 11 o'clock the California Community Housing Agency Regular Meeting, followed by 11:15, the Board of Equalization Regular Meeting. And then at 11:30, that has been canceled. So with that, if there's nothing further coming from the board, we will adjourn to closed session. Meeting adjourned.